Welcome everyone to our January 12th, Monday, City Council Meeting. Can we have a roll call to establish form, please?
Joyce Eller?
Here.
David Mitchell?
Here.
Bob Thomas?
There.
James DeVito?
Here.
Mickey Schneider?
Here.
David Mitchell. We have six.
All right.
You called me twice, I think.
Mr. McClung, you missed.
Mr. McClung?
I am here!
You called David twice.
I am here, yes.
I've been meaning to tell you about that.
He's even sitting like... A pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
I have two items. One is, if it's okay with the commission, I'd like to move the discussion of the budget to the first item under the new business so our finance director can leave to go home.
Well, you can do that on your own without a second.
All right. And the second thing is, I had a proclamation for Save the Ozarks Day that I read yesterday. Even though it's a day late, I'd like to go ahead and read that after we have the approval of the minutes, if that's all right also. We have a request by the CAPC to defer ordinance number 2220 on the countywide CAPC membership.
I'd make a motion to defer till the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Generally, that...
Okay, all in favor?
No, don't do that.
What, Mickey?
Do we vote on that?
Yeah. No, normally it was a second.
I think we do vote. I think we vote to defer it.
I think it's just the second, if we're adding and subtracting.
I'd like to have the opportunity to vote.
Sure, go for it.
Yeah, that's what I was asking for, discussion. And if there's any discussion, if not...
Can we wait until we get to that point then, if we're going to discuss?
No, we're asking to defer it.
We're on the agenda.
What's the difference between defer and postpone?
Leave it on or take it off, that's what we're asking.
Deferring it until the next meeting is what we're doing at this point in time.
Or asking to.
Asking to.
So a simple voice vote would be appropriate.
Absolutely. If there's no discussion, all in favor, sing five, sing aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
I'm neutral. Present.
Okay, I guess we're going to have a hand single roll call vote.
Three, two, one.
So this is to postpone the countywide CAPC membership?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
No.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Three, two, one.
Three, three. I vote aye.
Okay.
To defer it. All right, any other changes on the agenda? Yes, ma'am?
We need to add on there the CAPC seating.
It's on there.
It's on here.
The appointments where? No, the appointments.
Under commissions, committees.
Oh, up there, okay, I'm looking down under the new business stuff with all the hours and whatnot.
I thought it counted up there.
Okay, in the future, where is it supposed to be?
Wherever it was.
I'm looking under the new business.
Any other changes or additions, deletions to the agenda? All in favor of the agenda as it is, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so move. In regards to the, okay, approval of the minutes, did everybody get a copy of their minutes? Had a chance to read, hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor of approving the minutes as written, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so move. Commission committees, what, am I missing something? Oh, the proclamation, thank you, I put that on there myself. Save the day Ozarks, Save the Ozarks Day proclamation. This was written and given yesterday at the celebration of Save the Ozarks. It states, "Whereas on April the 3rd, 2013, American Electric Power and its subsidy, Southwestern Electric Power Company, SWPCO, put forward their proposal to construct a 345 KV transmission line across the Ozark Highlands of Northwest Arkansas and Southwest Missouri, threatening the culture, environment, and economy of Eureka Springs. And whereas citizens of Northwest Arkansas and Southwest Missouri join together as Save the Ozarks to defend the Ozarks against its environmental, economic, and cultural assault by mounting a formidable legal and technical defense, carrying out an effective media campaign and raising the large sums of money required for these efforts. And whereas despite a vigorous defense by SWPCO and Southwest Power Pool of their plan, Save the Ozarks presented legal and technical arguments that led the Arkansas Public Service Commission to conclude that the proponents of the transmission line had failed to prove the need for the line and was ultimately vindicated by SWPCO's withdrawal of their ill-conceived plan. Now therefore, I, Robert D. Berry, Mayor of Eureka Springs, do hereby proclaim the third day of April as Save the Ozarks Day in recognition of the invaluable service by Save the Ozarks, its officers, and other volunteers and supporters on behalf of the City of Eureka Springs, Northwest Arkansas, and Southwest Missouri. And witness thereof, I have hereby set my hand and cause the official sealed city of Eureka Springs to be affixed on this 11th day of January 2015." And I certainly want to, again, thank Pat Costner and the numerous thousands of people involved in this effort. It certainly has saved the Ozarks, and they did a great job, and words cannot adequately express my thanks. All right. Next item, commission committee terms on planning, the only, we have several people that are coming up for renomination, but Woody Acords, whose term expired 1/115, is the only one who has, right now, on the Planning Commission, expressed wanting to be renominated. So we put his vote, his name forward. Yes, sir, Mr. McClung?
Yes, I'd like to move that we go ahead and approve Mr. Acord for Planning Commission.
Second.
All right, got a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. CAPC, we have two council seats that the City Council occupies on CAPC.
I would like to be considered for that, if anybody is interested.
Okay, Joyce nominating herself. James?
I'd move to nominate Terry McClung.
All right. David?
I'd like to be considered possibly for one of those positions, also.
All right. And Ms. Schneider?
I was going to ask if the two boys were interested in doing it again, James and Terry.
Terry's been nominated, so James?
Well, he's been nominated, but that's what I was going to ask, are you two interested?
Was that a yes from James?
Excuse me?
Will you say yes?
Yes, I'll serve if nominated.
All right.
I'll nominate James, make it interesting.
I'm not sure how we go about doing this, I've never had this many... Any suggestions from city attorney here? Paper ballot?
Probably would be the way to do it.
Let's vote one at a time, I guess that's the only way we can do it for position five. Paper ballot.
Okay, a paper ballot?
I don't know, we can all vote. We can vote by hands, I mean, it's up to you guys, I don't know.
I think we should.
Should what?
Private vote, paper ballot.
As long as the ballots are, as long as the ballots are recorded...
Yes.
Then it's appropriate.
Yeah. We'll have the clerk.
I've got plenty of paper, we can just tear it off and pass it around.
While we are doing that, let me go ahead on a simpler deal.
Tear off paper to those...
While our clerk is, I'm going to jump over there and jump to a hospital commission. And see, we have Suzanne Totalot, whose commission has expired, who's applied, reapplied for the hospital commission, who would like to resubmit. Mr. McClung?
I would like to go ahead and nominate her for, that we vote for her continuing service.
Any comments? Any other nominations? All right. All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
And down to the cemetery position. Now, I will say, on the HDC, we have three positions vacant, I believe. So all those, no, one position that's vacant. All those out there in TV land who are interested in applying for the HDC, please come down.
One or three?
We have one.
Just one vacant.
Just one. I thought, I have three, but it's, what it is, is position three. I'm going to have to learn to read my own writing. Position three is vacant, and its term expires in November of 2017. So anyone who's interested in serving on the HDC, please come down and fill out an application. Yes, sir, Mr. McClung?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Romanski for reappointment on Cemetery Commission.
All right.
I'll second that.
Any further comments? All those in favor?
Do we have a form for them?
Yes.
We do. Oh, I didn't see it, okay, go ahead.
All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Okay.
They have them all together.
That's a good way to do it.
Sure.
Vote for two. Top two winners get it.
And I would suggest to hang on to the ballots, in case anybody wants to see them.
Have them written out. There might be hanging chads or something.
Well, we can't have a secret ballot, I mean, that's...
But there could be hanging chads or anything.
James.
Terry and James?
Oh, I thought it was done.
Terry and James. Joyce and David. Terry and James.
That's four.
Do you want to know what the other one says?
Sure.
Joyce and David.
Four, two.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the new old CAPC commissioners. Thank you very much for serving, because I know how hard it is. It's probably one of the hardest working commissions we have, one of the many. All right, public comments. Travis Story for Ray Dodson. Travis, are you around?
Should be coming in that door.
All right, this is public comments, this isn't for his application, if you're representing him.
I'm representing him, so I'll defer. I was, we were talking out there, so I heard you start that part, I'm sorry.
This is public comments, and so...
I will go ahead and wait for the remainder portion.
Okay, sounds good. All right, Jackie, Jackie Wobin? Come on in, Jackie.
Oh, it's Wobin here, guys. All right, so this new thing is that I'm going to come every month and say nice things, that's the new deal. I'm Jackie, I'm the Director of the Main Street Program, and the first really nice thing is, welcome, Butch.
Thank you.
And to all of you who are elected, we are really thrilled to have you here, so thank you. We have some good news. Let's see, in December, we had five new businesses open in the district, which in December is really good news. We also had two major pieces of property move in the district. One was deja vu, has sold and will be reopened as retail. And then the old Landacre Hotel site also was sold and is, as we know, looking to be built, rebuilt as a hotel. Those are really incredible things for the district. And then, lastly, we just, we worked with FBLA in December, and we helped them raise $500 for their prom, so that's good, they don't have a fundraising mechanism, so we helped them do that. And then Thursday night is our first Cocktails for a Cause. We've extended it to 12 months a year, James, it's 12 months a year now. And it's at the Grand Tavern, from 5:00 to 7:00, and our partner is the Humane Society, who is trying to expand their operations. So we hope to see you there, and thanks, thanks so much for serving, and I'll see you next month.
Thanks, Jackie. Fergie, I saw you out there, come on in.
Ferguson Stewart, 7 Harvey Road, I'm also sit on your Parks Commission. But I'm here as a citizen of Eureka. My, also, I like to, you know, welcome as mayor, formerly Butch Berry, and the other member that's here now. And I was hoping to actually sit at your table, but the citizens didn't agree with my opinions. But I'm here to talk about infrastructure, and I hope that this year, you break out and dust off the master plan to get the infrastructure looked at. I brought some information about how the state is doing on infrastructure, and it's not good. Right now, the state has gotten a D+ on roads, a C+ on bridges, transmit transit system, D+, drinking water, D+, wastewater, D-, a C+, levels, levees, D, and dams, D. So I've got other copies here to give you, but let's not follow the state's example. Let's work it, I know I saw on the agenda, you guys have got an issue that I believe is part of the infrastructure fixing a parking lot. It's our main source of income, and the city is, and we really need to focus on that this year, if we can. And that's all I have, sir.
Thanks, Ferguson, appreciate it. All right, that's the end of the public comments, or all the people who signed up. New order of business. As most of you know, since you're not newcomers, but Bob, we go around setting up our order of business, and the first thing is setting up our meeting dates for 2015, whether we want to continue meeting on the 2nd and 4th.
I would move to continue to meet at this time.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
So moved. The next order of business is a pro tem with Vice Mayor for 2015, I believe James served for last year, and this sits in for whenever I'm unable to be here, they will sit at this table and take that. Terry?
All right, if James is willing, I'd like to put him back out there for that.
You called on me first. I'll second that. I'll second that.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Do we have any other nominations?
Well, I was going to nominate him. He's being poopy.
James got it down pat, he smoothed it.
Yeah.
Rock the boat.
Well, then, all those in favor, sing by, sing aye.
Aye.
All those in post?
Abstain.
Rules of procedure, I think our standard rules have always been Robert Rules of Order, I'm sure there's certain additions and all that, but we'll just go with our basic Robert Rules of Order, I think. Mickey?
I hate Robert, please, can't we ever do it without him? No, don't we, I always have to say that, don't we use the abbreviated Roberts, what's that called?
That's fine, still Robert Rules of Orders.
That's what you've used, is the...
Basic.
Yeah, it's got a different...
Something about like, for dummies.
A bridge.
You know, Roberts for dummies.
Yeah, it's a shortened version.
Yeah, that one. Do we have to specify between the two?
There are so many additions of that, I doubt you can come up with a lot of additions.
I would think, unless we get into a real argument, we can just usually say Robert Rules of Order and be sufficient.
I don't like Robert. Don't do a weight.
James?
I'd move to maintain Robert's Rules of Order as procedure for the 2015 council.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right, that brings us down to unfinished business.
Wait, we've got, skipped down to new business.
No.
We're going to run through unfinished real quick.
It went unfinished first. It moved to the top of new business.
Okay, didn't you have, didn't you move?
I did, but I moved him to the front of new, of new business.
New business, not old.
Since that's new business, it's really not unbusinessed.
Okay, I thought you meant up in the first part of new business, okay.
So, Mr. McClung or Mr. DeVito, got a comments on Dwayne's recommendation for yard waste?
Well, actually, I'm not sure why I'm on there, because Mickey's been the one that's been...
That's mine.
So I'll defer, I'll defer Mickey.
We're putting it off one more meeting.
Okay, defer it?
Yeah.
Second.
Who was the second?
And I meant to do that at the beginning, and I forgot, I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. All right, number two is deferred. Number three, ordinance number 2221, Amending Personnel Policy Handbook, it's third reading. Do I have a motion?
I'd move to suspend the rules in place, ordinance number 2221, on its third reading by title only.
Second.
We have to have a roll call for suspending the rules, I believe.
See.
Do we have amendment going on? Do we have an amendment going on in this?
What, ordinance 22?
The wording, 21?
We have to do this first.
Just a minute, maybe.
Please, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Six, zero?
All right. Okay, now we need a motion to approve the reading? Now, we just read the title.
We're going to read the title.
Okay. And then we make the motion, okay?
Okay, ordinance 22... Wait a minute, I've got the one left. Thanks, I've got it. Ordinance 2221, and ordinance amending the City of Eureka Springs Personnel Policy Handbook.
Motion to approve.
I would move to approve ordinance number 2221 on its third reading.
Second.
Discussion.
Now, discussion?
I will never get that right, it's been six years, I'll never get it right. Okay, we were having a word problem. I don't know how we go about amending this, putting it in, because I don't have the... I've got this one.
Isn't that right?
What was the word?
These are the differences. I just wrote in.
Okay.
If you want to make a motion.
This is how we want it, right? Okay.
It's not up to me.
All right, we need to make a word change, a sentence change, because it was not clear that this was in regards to food only, so on and so forth. So make a motion that we amended to say, receipts of up to $50 per day spent on meals will be reimbursed. And we know it's for meals, how much a day, and only if you actually spend that, whatever your receipts are, is what you get paid back. So if you spend $5, no, you don't get 50, you get your receipt's worth.
As opposed to how it was worded?
As opposed to a total of $50 a day.
On my notes show that on the 8th of December, we amended that sentence to say, reimburse for a total of $50 per day for food. Now, you want to change that to something else?
We didn't get that put on there.
Why, my notes say it was 12, 8, 14.
Can we ask the clerk, she's got a better background?
Go ahead.
It was amended to say for meals, and then the question arose, if you wanted a total of $50 or a maximum of $50, and actually, this wording, if I remember correctly, was your suggestion, so as to make it clear that it's receipts of up to $50 per day spent on meals will be reimbursed.
Sounds good to me.
So, my question was, how are we changing it? Just to take this out and put this in.
Oh, he said, this way we know it's for meals, and it's only for the receipts you turn in. No, that's the way I have it.
Mr. McClung?
That's not what's on this one.
Well, it says total of $50.
Yeah, that's not what we want, though.
No, this is probably not.
Up to, up to $50.
Make, make, make the amendment.
I just did, I made the motion.
Mickey made the motion, so...
Somebody's got a second.
Well, I'll second that.
Okay.
I'm just not really sure what the motion was.
Page, so she'll have it.
The top.
That's our change.
The top yellow one.
Yeah, that's, that's the way it should read.
All right. Okay. Give it to her and get going.
All right, so is that amended? Would you read the amended version, please, for everybody, so we know where we're...
May I just read section one?
Yes.
Okay. That the Eureka Springs Personnel Policy Handbook is amended in the following manner. A, page 12 of the handbook is amended by having the second sentence in the first paragraph in the section titled "On Duty Travel/Leave," by having the second sentence deleted and amending the third sentence to read as follows, quote, "For any on-duty travel/leave that requires an overnight stay, the employee will be reimbursed for a total of $50 per day receipts..." Excuse me, "for a total of $50 per day spent on meals will be reimbursed."
You're missing...
You're right, it is awkward.
Yes, it is, or any requires an overnight stay...
Use this phrase. Use that phrase.
Total of...
No, she didn't. What are you supposed to...
She didn't. Yeah. I didn't smooth it out first, did I?
The top yellow.
Reimbursed up to a total of four meals.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Here. Madam Mayor? Oh, I mean, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McClung?
I was just going to suggest that the sheet in your left hand would, really, that wording is much more appropriate and to the point that we're trying to...
And that was our motion, too.
All right, basically, say receipts of up to $50 per day spent on meals.
Yes.
Period.
That's smoother.
Because we're going to be, the receipts will be reimbursed anyway. All right, everybody understand? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the amendment? Did I have a motion?
You had a motion and a second.
Okay, all in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Now then, we need to approve ordinance 221 as amended.
Third reading as amended.
Third reading as amended.
She wants her paper back when you're done with it.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance number 2221 on its third reading as amended.
Second.
Okay, any, any more discussion? Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor signify?
Third time we usually do it by...
By roll call? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yeah.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Six zero?
Thank you, guys. All right. Puts us up to, we got to the unfinished business, now the new business. Discussion of the 2015 budget.
Motion to discuss. Second.
We have a resolution before you that you should have all received in the mail or email and in your box, along with a copy of our general budget report. Lonnie is here. If we have any questions for him. Yes, sir, Mr. Williams. David. Mitchell. I'm sorry, Mitchell. Getting confused.
Lonnie, is the reserve still standing at what?
There, it's still standing.
And would you please repeat what that number was?
Lonnie, you want to come up here? I'm trying to get you on TV.
David, I don't have it right off the top of my head.
Give or take $100,000?
But in reserves, we probably have in the neighborhood of $400,000 or $500,000.
In reserves?
In reserves. And in this budget, in every category, there is a small amount that can be potentially transferred to reserves.
And when we had that budget meeting, you estimated somewhere in the ballpark of $100,000. I'm not going to hold you to it, but it was somewhere there.
Total, that's about right. And this resolution that you're looking at right now is essentially the same as what you've had back since about October that we've been working with. We did make some very minor changes because of some personnel changes in both the Fire Department and the Police Department. But that's all.
Okay, and we're still for Public Works anticipating a relatively large increase in revenue due to the water meters?
We are anticipating that when we get the meters fully, get them installed and everything. Just what we've done thus far, it has affected the cash flow in a positive way, I can tell you. By repairing the water leaks as they come up. Of course, there's one almost daily or weekly somewhere, but we're on, we're not. Public Works is on top of that pretty quickly every time that there is a leak. And the meters that have been changed out, and the combination of those two have made a significant difference.
So then, we would assume at that point, which is dangerous, but we'll assume that at that point there won't be as much need to move money from General Fund over to Public Works to compensate for expenses?
That's what's happening right now as we speak.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, James?
Oh, I was going to, do you have a question, Joyce?
Yeah, I'm lost in what we have here. What, our anticipated total revenue to cover this budget for 2015, is that the first figure up here or... Okay, I'm comparing this to what I had in the October 31st statement. The requested budget was $3,359,298 for total estimated revenues.
Is this on page one?
Well, I guess. I'm not used to getting it this way, so I'm not sure I'm reading it. The first page, is the first page, that bottom number on the first page, is that what we are anticipating for total revenues for 2015?
For the General Fund only.
For the General Fund only. Well, what are we anticipating for the city? Do we have that figure? What the total revenue that we expect to take in to pay these bills that we're going to be voting on tonight?
You're wanting the water and sewer and the streets and everything.
No, no, not that, just the General Fund.
That's your top number.
No, the water and, I'm considering that the water and, the Water and Sewer Fund is a revenue stream producing thing, so that one is a separate thing. So, and so is the ambulance fund, so whatever doesn't produce... Let me rephrase this. I don't, this is first meeting, is, I'm probably getting into gear here. Whatever is not a revenue-producing, a revenue stream fund, that we have to depend on tax collections to pay the appropriations, what are we anticipating those tax collections to be over this past year? Is that, you know what I'm asking you?
No, I don't understand the word.
Are we expecting to take in more money than we did last year? Taxes, taxes and for general revenue?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Yes.
And how much more are we anticipating to take in? Do you know?
Well, it's not a huge amount, but it is based on, are you talking about sales tax, collections?
Well, whatever we get revenue from, that we use to pay the city's expenses.
Well, we...
Because we get revenue from, you know, parking fines and building permits and all kinds of stuff.
What's the percent projection over last year's budget as to this year?
It's about 3%.
3%. So we're about the rate of inflation.
Okay, and last year, actually, we ended up with about $60,000 and some change, more than we did the year before. We had an increase of somewhere around $60,000.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, so are we expecting any more increase this year than $60,000? Okay, okay. I know where we're at. I just had trouble putting in the words, I guess.
James?
I would move to assign this resolution a number and pass it by reading.
Second.
A motion second, any further discussion? Being done? Do we sign a number and then vote, read it and then vote? I forgot.
Well, the way he made the motion was to assign a number, read it, and it would be passed.
Okay, so no further discussion. Sign a number and read it.
You'd have to vote first.
Oh, we need to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Sorry, I forgot. Because it's done, it will be done. It has to be...
Did I hear an ayes?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any ayes? All right.
I made a mistake.
Can we go home now?
She's got... All right, now then, we're going to go back again, and we're doing this by vote voice. Yeah. We're all learning this time.
We're going ahead like we're the Turtles. Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Certainly.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Six zero? The resolution number will be 652. Resolution providing for and adopting budgets for the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas for the 12-month period beginning January 1, 2015, and ending December 31, 2015. Appropriating money for each and every item or of expenditure therein provided for. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas has made a comprehensive study and review of the proposed budgets and... Whereas in the opinion of the City Council, the proposed 2015 budget presents as accurately as possible the city's anticipated revenues and expenditures for the 2015 calendar year. And now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, Section 1, this resolution shall be known as a budget resolution for the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for the 12-month period beginning January 1, 2015 and ending December 31, 2015. And the attached 2015 budget documents reflect estimated revenues and expenditures in detail for the period. All revenues and appropriations are based on estimated revenues, and all estimates are subject to change during the budgetary period. Section 2, the amounts for revenues and expenditures proposed for the 2015 municipal budget are hereby authorized and appropriated for the purposes set forth in the calendar year ending December 31, 2015. Estimated revenues for the General Fund, $3,360,373, and appropriation for that fund, Estimated revenues for the Street Fund, $708,500, and appropriation for that fund, $687,808. Estimated revenue for lot fee, $274,567, and appropriations for that fund, $272,892. Estimated revenue for the Capital Fund, $928,500, and appropriation for that fund, $928,344. Estimated revenue for the Debt Service, $1,227,300, and appropriation for that, $1,187,798. Estimated revenues for the Court Automation, $6,225, and appropriation for that, $4,000. Estimated revenue for the Fireman's Pension Fund, $102,576, and appropriation for that fund, $99,000. Estimated revenues for the Municipal Court Retirement, $1,075, and appropriation for that, $1,075. Estimated revenues for the Water and Sewer Fund, $442,400, and appropriation for that fund, for those funds, $1,193,795. Estimated revenues for the Transit Fund, $1,219,244, and appropriation for that fund, $916,450.
Thank you, guys. Next business, next item on the agenda, the decision on Ray Dotson's animal-drawn franchise application.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council for moving that up under the table.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion to discuss.
So moved?
We did.
Oh, you did?
We did, we seconded, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Time for discussion. Ready? I'd like to ask a couple of questions of the attorney as we get, before we get started here, if that's possible. Mr. Weaver, in the case of franchises with the city and everything, it's the city's, it's in the city's pleasure whether we keep a franchise open or we modify them or we close them. It is our prerogative as to franchises, whether they exist or not. Am I off-base on that?
Franchise law allows for the city, yes, as any entity that grants franchises, to leave a franchise open if they feel there's not an appropriate applicant at any time, or to dispose of franchises in certain instances where they're no longer needed or they're no longer desired.
So in the case when you have, we have franchises that we have questions about the wording in the operations of current franchises that we have, and we possibly wish to clarify those, is it, would it potentially be prudent or acceptable to not open that franchise and then to request that possibly the city attorney review all of the pertinent franchise examples around and bring back wording to the franchises, the way we have them detailed out, that would make them more clarified and understandable and better for the city?
That is typically done not only with franchises, but with other issues that sometimes the city may have where a new application of some type has been made for a business or something of that nature, change also. If you are going to consider changes to an ordinance or to a section of the code, you often will put a freeze to hold your position until you know what you wish to make changes so that any new entity coming in under either the franchise or under the other stated new rules will know from the very beginning what the rules are and how they apply. And so you don't have a question of, well, are they under the old set of rules, are they under a new set of rules?
So that would be appropriate in this?
It is appropriate. It has been done repeatedly by this council in various instances where there are major considerations of issues about planning commission recommendations. There's been about franchises. It's a common occurrence.
Thank you.
Ms. Snyder?
Question for y'all. Do you have updated needs to work for us?
Yes, ma'am. I believe we've got the petition or the request for the application for the franchise has been filed. I believe, actually, is the same that you've had previously. It just asked, it just asked for... Sorry. Is that better? It is updated from the last meeting that it only requests one route, which is the route we believe is vacant or being vacated currently.
That's the only update you have for us?
That's, that's the update as to the application. There has been, and I believe the council has been made aware, that there was a writ of mandamus that was issued.
No, I'm not...